negatively affecting students in all aspects of their lives. And they are receiving a mediocre education at best. Some educators have expressed to me that they don't even know what some of their, their kids look like that they're teaching. Can you imagine blindly educating a student for an entire semester and not engaging them? If you were to meet them and not recognizing them if you were to meet them in public. Students and teachers are all feeling the effects of virtual learning. I myself have burst into tears and experienced depressed states over the fact that I can't be with my closest friends. Learn from my favorite teachers or be taught by my newest teachers. I know for a fact that I'm not the only one. It pains me to think of all the memories I have failed to make with my friends. All the activities in class that I'll never participate in and all the knowledge that has escaped me. School is a structure of life that all children need to function around. Thank you for your time and your consideration. My response to Lucy is that we hear you and we are trying. I hope we can answer her questions with real answers tonight. Thank you to the board for letting me speak on her behalf. And that's all I had.
All right. Do you have any other, any other comments from board members? Well, I don't want to take any other time. I do want to echo my fellow board members' sentiments about how grateful that I am for all of the work that went into the vaccination clinic. I know it's tremendous and it was a very short amount of time. Very, very thankful for, for that work. I'm going to pass the baton over to you, Dr. Nichols.
All right, it is, February is school board appreciation month. And while we appreciate our school board members every year, we absolutely appreciate their dedication, hard work and flexibility during this pandemic. In the year 2020, 21. So we do have some tokens of our appreciation which you have. We have a certificate from the V S B A. You also have, last year I gave you one of my favorite children's books in case you were invited to read either virtually in person. The one you have today, I don't want to ruin the opening of it, but the title is, uh, uh, what do you do with a problem? So it's a series and I thought, what do you do with a problem is the perfect book for 2020, 21. So as you look through it, you'll see that we're on track with what do you do with a problem? You face it head on and you work through it. So, so thank you to board members. I believe you do have some gifts from schools as well. Just thank you for your continuous support, leadership and flexibility as we navigate the toughest year in my 25 years in education.
Yeah. The, so, um, yeah, presenting tonight on Black History Month, members of the board, Dr. Nichols, one moment. All right. So as you are aware, every February, we celebrate Black History Month and the, um, the governor put out a proclamation today and regarding it and the Virginia Board of Education put out resources over the last couple of weeks on ways that we can be celebrating the month. But I wanted to give you a little bit of information on, um, just this month. Again, the history goes back to about 1925 and when Carter Woodson and the Organization Association for the Study of Negro Life and History started with, they say, a week. And then this says in 1976 became Black History Month for the month of February. So the, some of the activities that we have going on to celebrate this throughout the division, every grade level has something going on. So at pre-K through second grade, they're studying different African Americans and their contributions to, to life and everything that they've done, third grade and they're reading some biographies throughout the month and creating presentations. And then once you get up to fourth and fifth grade, doing some daily articles, readings, and then doing some online exploration and looking at different, different literary works that were put out by African Americans. And the same thing with the library and then art and music, they'll be celebrating artistic expression within the African American community. At the middle school, they have month-long events called Left Every Voice in which the students can take part in where they have a collection of books that they are recommending that students read. And, um, and then they're setting up discussion groups for those students to be able to then talk with one another and respond to those. And then also they are encouraging students to pick a song that for them, it speaks to them about change, it could be about personal or social change or just encouragement. And, um, and then talk about how does that relate to them. At the end of the month, they'll have Soul Cinema Day. It's a day-long event where they'll look at soul food, have soul food and hairspray or at least talk about soul food, I guess, in a virtual environment. At the high school, all English classes, because those are classes that every, every student or students at every grade level are involved in. They celebrate Black History Month really throughout the semester with a variety of different readings. But there are some specific activities during the month that they worry like, and a 10th grade is looking at just diversity appreciation and reading selections for about it. And but some of the things that they touch on are racial inequality dreams, like the American dream, empathy, appreciative diversity and personal ideals and self-reflections. And then a variety of different literary works that they use to help them with that. And through that, they'll do whole class discussions, research projects and different self-reflections. Thank you.
Next up is Dr. Bishop.
This is for career technical education. Thanks. Uh, you know, it all relies on our teachers for career and technical education. And it's a difficult time, but they're still trying to put forth lessons that really have allocation for within the, the courses and also later in life. A ton of great, really forward-thinking CTE classes from intro to technology to computer information systems, TV media, engineering drawing with Project Lead the Way, horticulture, Virginia teachers for tomorrow, even interest to marketing, just to name a few. But just a one kudos, just this semester, this semester, we have 27 Microsoft certifications for our students. And we have one student who's earned the Microsoft Master Certification. So we're still moving forward. Career technical, technical education is still a living part of, of New Haven County. I'm very proud of the school board for supporting that. Thank you.
School council.
So it is school counseling week. Commutation from the governor. Um, just, you know, it is all about the people in our school, this school division. And so, um, just reflecting on, you know, our school counselors, why we need school counselors to play such a critical role in ensuring students have the academic development, addition to social, emotional, career development, knowledge, its skills and attitudes to be successful. They meet with the kids, they do, they're trying to do small group meetings throughout the school year. They're still, they're reaching out to the families, reaching out to the caregivers, um, parents. And so the next, um, just have our, just want you to just see our elementary, um, counselors, Rita, Crystal, Amy, and Emery. Emery is new to us this year as our elementary school counselor at the New Haven Elementary School. And then we have our middle school counseling cohort, Chatis, Lisa and Kelsey. Powerhouse team, all works, all three teams are. And then finally our high school. We have Pam, Rita, Liz and Bonnie as the counseling secretary. So want to reach out to our counselors, doing a great job and really, you know, as the letters stated, this is difficult for students. So really trying to reach out and provide that support for them. So happy school counseling.
And also this week is the school board clerk appreciation week. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank Millen for all the work that you do for us to support. Keep us organized and straight and for our deputy clerk, Dr. Nichols, for doing your part.
Just so you know, the clerk put the deputy clerk in his place today as the deputy clerk was trying to help with something. So the clerk is definitely in charge and the deputy just steps in every now and then. Yeah. So.
Good job.
So on our consent agenda, we have considered for approval of the minutes from, we had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the November 16th work session and the, yeah, actually the other ones, November 16th or November 30th.
Yeah.
So, and also the approval of the bills and payroll for December of 2020 and approval of the monthly financials for December of 2020. Also on the consent agenda is approval of the superintendent's recommendations regarding personnel matters. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now it's citizen comment period. It's the only way that's signed up for. We have Miss Leslie Trivitt, if you'd like to come up to the stand here. Before you begin, just so you know, there is a three-minute blank time period.
Right. It's a privilege and responsibility to talk with the school board. Thank you. Got three questions. One, I'd like to know some numbers. What are the numbers of the students in Uken who are now failing, that were not failing previous to the lockdown? And what numbers do we have from mental health providers about suicides and other mental health problems? I know there have been nine suicides in Shusterfield County students. I think this is a very serious question and we need data on this. I also like numbers on when are the rest of the students going back to school? Can we please put dates for the rest of these cohorts on the calendar and work toward those dates? My second question is, what are the best practices that private schools, Hanover and West Point schools know that we either don't know or not putting into practice? Have the school board members visited any of these other schools that have been in session in person full-time since the September? It's been 10 months and I think they know something we don't know or are not able or haven't been willing to put into practice. I'd be very interested in knowing if anybody has been there. Okay. My third question is, why are we here? The state constitution of the Commonwealth says we must provide an appropriate education for our children. I submit, we're not providing an appropriate education when my children are sitting at home saying, this is stupid mommy, I already know this, or this is stupid mommy. Nobody else in class is paying attention and the teacher's not able to teach me. I have the highest respect for my children's teacher. She's an excellent teacher. But remote teaching doesn't get the job done. Our principal said it last time. We cannot do what we do well if we're not doing it in person. I have articles here, dozens and dozens of articles from the Wall Street Journal, Richmond Times Dispatch. I'll get a read from this one briefly. This is from three state senators, two Democrats and one Republican. They said, our students are falling behind in school. They're seeing mental health and social, emotional and abuse issues increasing. Drops in academic performance among children is off the sharks. There is no evidence that schools must be closed to be COVID. In contrast, the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics have maintained that this entire time. This school should be open with certain measures and precautions in place. A key factor in this analysis is that children are significantly less affected by this disease. Very few children under 18 have died. Yet despite the data, children continue to pay the largest price of the shutdown. The best interest of the children should drive every school decision. For 10 months, 1 million children have embarked from public school classrooms without scientific rationale. It is the job of this board and the duty of this board to send all of our children back to school. Thank you.
New business. Application of school board members to various committees and external boards. So we had this sent to us earlier today. Commentary between the board, does anybody have any, any changes that they would like made? I know that for the new school, we're going to go list, Ms. Dr. Parting, a second. Back up on the new school panel. I'm okay with mine. Are you?
Uh, I'm okay with my appointment. It says they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
Any comments from those joining us from it?
And it's asked, you and I talked about the, the gifted advisory.
Yes, that's, that's right. The gifted advisory. I will, I can take that.
Welcome to.
Next up is Ms. Mooreman, the award of security grant and request for matching funds. This may have, uh, chair of board members.
$12 million was awarded by the state for the school security equipment grants. Out of 489 schools and 102 school divisions, we were one of those and we received an award of $20,256, which will be specifically to update cameras and radiators on buses. So tonight I just bring that to you for appropriation and also request that we transfer $5,064 from our C I P fund to match those funds.
And this will come before you as an action later on the agenda. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to take those.
Next up is the 2021, 2022 calendar, Dr. Nichols.
All right. So this is coming to you as a first read. Remember back to calendar discussion last year, there was a lot of conversation about free and post-labor day. As I mentioned last meeting, there'll be none of that conversation this year with the pandemic and with our summer programming expansion that we're putting together now. We'd like to stay at the post-labor day at least for the next year. But with the new school coming online a year after that, we, we may be in a two-year cycle with that. So I want to bring you up to date on the calendar and then talk about next steps and of course, take any questions you may have as soon as that is off our screen. Russ, you got, Ross is working two computers right now. So, sorry. Okay. Here we go.
One of, yeah, I need to, it's more like.
Okay. So we'll talk a little bit about the calendar process. So we've moved to site-based meetings. So we've been able to have meetings with student services, Dr. Clark and her team. Each of the schools, George Watkins, New Haven Elementary, New Haven Middle School, New Haven High School, this, these are staff meetings and also transportation. So we've been able to work through those groups with an initial work through. Let's scroll down a little bit more. Oh, too far. Okay. I've also had an opportunity to work with teacher advisory, my teacher advisory group and also my parent advisory group on, on the calendar. After tonight's meeting, tomorrow we'll have a calendar feedback form online. So if you're not part of those groups, you will have an opportunity to give your feedback on that as well. And we'll continue to update the calendar based on suggestions. So this won't come back to you for a second read until the March meeting. We want to have a good period of time in between to continue that process. I'll have another set of teacher advisory meetings, have another set of parent advisory meetings to work through that. So let's talk about what the calendar contains and then I'll show it to you. And like I said, tomorrow, this will be posted online for families. So in the calendar overview, seven teacher workdays, professional development days, beginning of school year, at the beginning of the school year, I'm sorry. So that's standard with those workdays. The, we will begin after Labor Day. It still has 180 instructional days. That is code, 180 instructional days or 990 hours. So that breaks down, school would begin Tuesday, September 7th. Your contractual days, 200 teacher contract days, stays the same, 180 instructional days, 10 assigned days and 10 holidays. One of the biggest shifts, there aren't a lot of shifts in this one, but this is probably the biggest one. Traditionally, we have had half-day professional development day. So typically occur on a Friday. They're not very favorable for families because then you're left with half-day daycare. Attendance is very low on those Fridays. And from a teacher perspective, to do professional development in the afternoon, if you talk to your kids on a Friday is probably not the ideal time to try to get people smarter. So this moves to eliminate those half-days. So we're either going to be in all day or we're going to be in, or not going to be in, basically. So what it does that is different is implements four at-home learning days to support professional development. So on those days that we do have professional development, teachers will provide opportunities for students to do some work at home. Of course, it will not be internet-based. It will be, they'll be able to download it before they go. They'll have packets to utilize and different extension projects depending on the level. It's a very flexible day. It could be, depending on where it is, an opportunity for some high school kids like mine to catch up on some of this work or get ahead on some other pieces. Those do count in that 180. So that's a nice modification that we haven't been able to do before. November's election day, schools are closed. That's a parent-teacher conference day. We do continue the three days Thanksgiving break. The biggest question I've been asked on calendar is, do we still have the two-week winter break? Yes, we do. We have managed to include that in there as well. One week spring break and the last day of school is Friday, June 17th. So that's sort of a big overview. Feel free to ask any questions at any time. I do have a couple. Yeah. So this is what the calendar looks like and it's coded. So you can kind of see what all the colors mean. You'll be able to see this online later as well. So school begins September 7th, school ends June 17th.
So in all, in this presentation, all of these calendars are the same. It's just pointing out different nuances.
Correct. Yeah. Just to kind of walk you through, there is, it is not a choice between two. It is a post-labor day on Tuesday, September 7th to June 17th. What we've been doing in these groups is making modifications within those 180 days.
Dr. Nichols, how are we able to, I know this comes up every year, but and I know there's not an easy answer to this, but how do we balance these, this SOL learning and testing system that is currently in place as you get closer to the end of, of, of a school year? And either how do you make those days either more productive at the end so that we're just not backfilling time to fulfill our 180 days? Because you'll hear teachers and even parents say, you know, my kids are not really being productive the last two weeks of school after they take the SOLs because pretty much grades have to be in, everything has to be submitted. And so how do we backfill those last two weeks of school usually to make them more productive days for our, for our students and for our parents as well? So they know that we are actually teaching those last couple of weeks of school.
Yeah, there are a couple of different ways we can attack it, but there is this period of time that SOL testing has to be done. And school is still in session and you have rapid grades and those piece like, like you illustrated. There are a number of different things that, that we can look at. One is to look, so I just finished second, second grade be a bad example. They don't have SOAs, third grade. So I've finished third grade and I have a week left or whatever. What could a jumpstart the fourth grade sort of look like? Maybe you're with your fourth grade teacher, maybe, you know, so I think that could be a productive, a more productive way to look at it. And, and we can certainly work, work through that. What's interesting at the general assembly right now, you have two competing bills. They're not really competing. They're just two separate. One wants to do SOL testing three times a year. So fall, mid-year, spring. Very much opposed to that because of the shutdown that occurs when you're SOL testing and the security and the time and testing. The other one seeks to eliminate more SOL tests and go to the federal standard for number of tests that we have to take. So we'll be kind of watching that. We've been given some flexibility this year with SOL testing and what we do have to give kids. That'll provide some relief this year in some of those areas. But I, I do think it's something that we need to look at and it's a real issue for teachers, for students and for families. Yeah. So this slide illustrates where the four at-home learning days would be, which would also be our professional development day. So you see that they're spaced throughout the year. Once again, same calendar, but also notes where there are holidays and there's no school and also where there is a teacher workday. Our next steps on this calendar, continue these site-based meetings. So the sites that we've talked about. I have February teacher advisory, I believe it's the 24th. Parent advisory, calendar feedback phone goes online February 3rd. Continue to update the calendar based on suggestions. And then second reading of the proposed calendar will come to you in March. And if anything major happens between now and our work session on the 16th, we will bring that forward to you. So you would have an opportunity to, to look at it. So much different from last year's process with, with two calendars, really just the one post-labor day. This presentation, you'll also be able to see it posted online. So nothing go through it, but Mr. Miller, if you'll scroll down further. You get a zoom in on each one of those months. So you don't have to eyesight looking at the whole calendar together. It zooms into each one of those. So you can kind of look at that a little closer. So with that, that's the proposed calendar for 21, 22. Be happy to answer any additional questions you may have at this time.
And we all, I know you've talked about this in the past, but how, how was, how was the potential calendar change moving into the future? Possibly even this year of what the extended school year is going to look like and will that be a permanent part of a school calendar? So that, so that parents can plan for it. I know that's one of the questions even now. If we have mandatory or the state comes out and says, hey, did you make it for last time, lost time or whatever? What's your, what's your thoughts or about that?
At least this first summer, we're looking at expanded summer program, but it still has an optional piece to it. So strongly recommended for students who have deficits and learning gaps that we've identified. But we crafted it in such a way. And I believe the, the question about the social emotional piece. So even if you're on target with your learning, it's a great social emotional opportunity to get back with your peer group and sort of jumpstart to the next school year. So that's what we're looking at for this summer. Beyond this summer will really be determined by funding and, and how well this summer goes. Regionally and actually across the Commonwealth, there's not a big push to go year-round at this point. Big hope I was looking at it before pandemic and it's going to go back to it. Post-pandemic, they abandoned it for a year. And I know the governor's made some remarks about year-round schooling. But we kind of learned that live in that press conference. So we'll kind of see where that goes. For us, it's really about expanding the K-12, having high school kids opportunity to take a course over or take a new course and free up some, some room in their schedule. So it's going to be a huge step forward for us. But not mandatory at this point in time. So more information coming, we're going to have some save the dates for families that are interested. Really trying to craft it in a way that's flexible. So if you have something going on during the first two weeks or three weeks or whatever it is, we'll have two separate sessions is the idea. So if you can't come session one, you could come session two. Or you can come session one and session two if the schedule allows. Just trying to be flexible and responsive to families.
Dr. Nichols, back to the 2021, 22 calendar. A lot of districts have already approved their calendars. So how does this align with, with neighboring counties and counties that we play athletic events with Bay Rivers about the same?
Sure. I think for the next three years, we'll have dual calendars. You'll have some that are pre, some that are post. I would say in three years, everybody will be pre-Labor Day. So it'll re-line up. Even this year, regionally, we have some schools, Goochland being one, that has been pre-Labor Day for quite some time. But we're still in Maggie Walker with them. We're still in Code RBA with them. We're still our regional program and we play them in athletics. So we're equipped to manage that. Mr. Henson and his team do a phenomenal job of, of making that happen. The V H S L will govern when we can play and when we can't play. So they'll even all that out for us from an athletic standpoint. And then for regional program and for example, Chesapeake Bay already starts before our high school kids do. And we make sure kids get there. So we're ready and able to do that and we'll continue to work through that. I have, and, and Ms. Swiford, you're on Code RBA with me, but I believe both Cara Ovaya and Maggie Walker could be post-labor day for next school year. Or at least they're proposing that to their boards and then. uh, for next school year. Uh, or at least they're proposing that to their boards. And then Chesapeake Bay is already pre-labor day. So from a regional standpoint, I think we're fine next year. Um, and even if we were the only ones on an island, we would manage that and work that through. But I think you'll see more and more schools going two weeks pre-labor day in the next three years.
Three years. Okay, thank you.
Moving into old business, we have the redistricting update.
Yeah, uh, remember the board, Dr. Nichols, uh, wanted to give an update tonight on where we are with new elementary school redistricting. And so the, I want to start with just the timeline and where we've been. Looking back, we started back February twentieth, or February twenty-twenty and has, um, and worked our way through the spring and gathering information. We've been gathering information for a while prior to that. Then uh, March, um, had our first planning team meeting and then had a public information session back in Bay. June, July started reacting to some of the things we had in the public information session and then um sort of took a break for a while as we planned for the arrival of school and through the fall, um, just took a break on it. In December, we got back together with the planning team and then we had our second public information session on the twentieth of January. And so now we're here, um, uh, coming up on the seventeenth, we'll have our next meeting and then we'll have a recommendation due in March.
So the break in between was really intentional with all the focus on return to in-person learning or return to learn. We didn't want the, and probably the hardest part of this redistricting piece is not getting the redistricting message lost in the pandemic. So really took an intentional break there, um, and then restarted it with an eye on giving families that do have a shift in zone. Um, over a year's notice that the zone would shift for them when Quentin Elementary comes aboard. So sorry, Mr. Miller.
So the, the big thing that came out in our last public information session was, was really to go over the different options that, uh, the committee has come up with, working with Cropper, with Cropper. And so the first of those um is here and you can see New Kent Elementary School in purple and then Watkins Zone would be in green and then colors will off there, but um, it's tan for the new elementary school on the far left. And those are, all the breaks are um with planning zones. So it's all pretty, pretty um uh, well-done and, and most of them follow roads. And so like the break between New Kent Elementary School and Watkins, believe this is what, yeah, one fifty-five, um, coming up through the middle. And then over, over on the other end is um Airport Road. So Airport Road would be the western side of Watkins Zone and would start the new elementary school. And the, one of the things that you'll notice in A is down here, this is the main difference between the two maps. And this section right here is Oakmont, uh, which is the front of Brickshire. Uh, in this uh, map, that portion would go to Watkins. And the only difference, that's really the only difference between it and option B, which um takes that out. And those, those families would still go to New Kent Elementary School in option B. Um, the there, basically it's a numbers option A, when you look back the statistics, it, it balances the numbers a little bit better. And an option B, you keep that entire community as one piece. And so those are the two benefits that we're really balancing there.
Yeah, so pros and cons of each approach. Um, option A gives you a little more balance for capacity and future growth. We partnered with the county, really want to thank the county for their partnership on this. We looked at future growth in the county and where it would occur. What we didn't want to do is do redistricting. I definitely didn't want to do redistricting and then come back two years later and do redistricting again. So really is with the future eye, how we drew these lines and looked at where the growth was gonna be in the county. So that's where the Oakmont piece came in um as far as balance. So if you, if Oakmont stays at New Kent Elementary, like an option B in front of you, that creates a little bit of less capacity at New Kent Elementary. So you have a potential for some capacity issues in five years. Um, especially with some of those neighborhoods, Brickshire specifically, all the houses being built in there right now. Uh, lots of future growth there. So really looking at, at those pieces, I will say, and I don't know if Mr. Miller has this in his presentation, but um working with uh, Remley Sherman, who is on the redistricting committee, is also a teacher at New Kent Elementary, resident at Oakmont. Um, really kind of pushed on option A as being a good option. So since Oakmont is the, is the big difference between the two, that area, is we're gonna do specific outreach to that community or that subset of the community. So um, that's also in, in Ms. Barber's district. So Ms. Barber, Ms. Sherman, myself. And I told Ms. Swiffer, and I said she's on our redistricting committee. Um, once we have a plan, we'll communicate that as well and do some specific outreach there. With the pandemic and some of the rules and regulations and what we have to, it's not as easy. I'd just be fine walking door to door and, you know, hey, how are you doing? Let's look at this map. Um, I don't think that's gonna work as a plan, but we meet Wednesday, I believe, to
That's correct.
to do that as well. So before you have a first reading in March, you'll have that as, in there as well. So, once again, sorry, Mr. Miller.
So right now in this period after the first public, second public information session, what we're, um, the next step is getting community input. And so we have several ways uh that we'd like the community to interact with this. So on our new elementary school website, there is a redistricting page. On there, there's an interactive map in which you can look um in a variety of different ways at those two options. You can drill down by neighborhood. You can see planning blocks. You can see all the different things that we use to make tho- those decisions, to balance it out. There's also a, the presentation from the twentieth. If you weren't able to be on there, then you can, um, that presentation is posted on there. And also there's some statistical documents that show how the balancing of the two schools plays out. The final ways, we'd love to get some feedback from the community on these options. And so there is an online form. And it's linked here, which this presentation is going to be on Board Docs. Um, so uh, community can reach it there. It's also linked directly on the new elementary school page. So you can go there to fill out the form. And that's just the top of it on the left, but really asking some detailed information as to which options you like, why you like one over the other and things like that. So we can get a good picture of what the community is thinking on it. So we really would like a lot of people to, to weigh in on that, get an idea. The, also for additional information, this is, this is the redistricting page on the new elementary site. Um, these, this section in the middle is everything I just went over. So it's, we pulled it out and set it aside so that you could quickly find that. And so to get to that, you can go through our website to get there and um the whole site is now retitled to Quentin Elementary School Planning, but there, within it, there is an elementary school redistricting process page.
We do have a, uh, you will see this at every meeting until we finalize it. Um, just so that we keep bringing it to the forefront. Uh, there will be a phone call to elementary families along with the social media push tomorrow, reminding them of all of this information and linking to this presentation. Uh, at our work session on the sixteenth, we'll bring you the feedback that we've received so far. So before you have a first read in March and then the second read is in April, I believe Matthew Cropper, Cropper GIS, our consultant on it, will be with us virtually on March first to kind of zoom into some of the planning blocks and answer those specific questions. But um we've had a great committee. It's been, it's been a really good process. Um, from where we started to where we are now, we've done a lot of shifts um, to get to this point. So I definitely want feedback going through, throughout the process. Uh, would love to have a final approval in April. That way families that, that do need to adjust by the twenty-two, twenty-three school year would, would have that opportunity. So.
Any questions or? Parafication?
And I know Ms. Swiffer has been on the committee. Ms. Swiffer, if you want to add anything as well.
I just uh appreciate everybody's time. I, I look, I think it's important to have that community outreach in the Oakmont neighborhood, which is important. Because I want people to um make sure, our, our job is just to make sure that they have the information in a timely fashion in a way that, that they don't feel surprised by any of these decisions. So um, I appreciate all of that. And I encourage people to provide their feedback via that form. So, thank you.
Last but certainly not least is return to in-person learning update.
All right. My computer's not working, so we'll go off this screen. Um, uh, good evening again. Board members want to bring you an update on return to in-person learning update. Uh, on re- return to in-person learning, sorry. Um, excited that our second and third graders will be in person starting tomorrow. So very excited about that. Uh, but want to take you through where we are and update you on some of the information we have. Um, this is our base approach. This is the criteria that um we've talked about at each mess, at each meeting. So we always start with this. Uh, regional, county health metrics, staffing for student learning, students choosing in class learning and uh the health of students and staff in our school. How are we on quarantines, positive cases, uh, so on and so forth. So take you into that. This is our core indicators. I got this today from the health department. So the good news in the past three weeks is that the numbers were going down. So they're not as great news as they are going back up this week. Um, so this is New Kent County specific. Uh, and these metrics will tie into the new information from the governor and the VDOE here in Suckett. So so those are total number of cases per a hundred thousand. You can see when we left for, uh, right before the new year, we were at six eleven with percent of PCR at ten and a half. Okay, so it is still elevated from that point. Um, but that is one piece of the puzzle. Student staff health is another piece that we share each time we're together. So this data is from last week or as of last week. Um, so you can see our number of students in quarantine last week, staff in quarantine, and then our total numbers since the beginning of school. So quarantines continue to be far more disruptive than positive tests. Um, and in our work session coming up on the sixteenth, I'll show you the layers of protection we put in place in case a staff member has to quarantine. Who fills that gap and then who fills that gap there. So making sure you see everything that we have in place. But new guidance for Virginia schools has been referenced. So um, we received new guidance on January fourteenth uh from the governor's office. It does include many of the same factors that we were working through initially. It just shifts the weight and provides more of a recommendation from the State Department. So at the top, you have level of community transmission. I've already shared with you that we're in the red, so we'd be in the highest. So that's the column we would look at. Uh, what we've been doing a really good job with is the school impact and ability to implement mitigation. So if we were to follow that low impact to high community transmission, it would be sort of in that area that I have circled. Uh, which is priority learners in person. Priority learners are um K-two, uh, students with disabilities. And ESL fits in that priority piece. I did link, you can't see it on the screen, but because this presentation will be posted as well. The link to the full document, which defines all of the different groups for you. Uh, but just wanted to show you, even based on this new guidance, where we are, community transmission, school impact. That's where we are currently as a school division as well. Every day brings new challenges. So this was today. So I just wanted to show you, sometimes we have to shift. Uh, so this data was not reflected uh when this presentation was initially created. I added the slide. So as of today, we have a first grade class in person that will now be in quarantine until February twelfth. Um, that includes multiple staff members. Uh, so the impact of one positive case has twenty-four people in quarantine. So just kind of showing the numbers on, on that piece there. And I just want to stress to our families once again, and we've been doing this, and a lot of our parents have really been doing a tremendous job, but it only takes one to take out a class. If you're symptomatic or your child is symptomatic, please stay home. We'll connect you with the resources you need for, for academics. What we don't want is one positive case taking out a whole class if we can prevent it. There are cases where we're not gonna be able to prevent it. There are exposures that happen. Um, but we can all work together to minimize a shift like this. I know none of those parents and those staff members um enjoyed the information that they're now gonna be out until February twelfth. It's a hardship. It's a disruption. Um, it's a whole lot of time, energy and effort on all sides to make that happen. So if you're sick, you feel sick, you're symptomatic, please stay home. Um, it happened to me and my family just last week. So my son was, I was at work, got the call. He was, and he's a virtual learner right now. He's a, a junior. Got the call that he had a, a fever and wasn't feeling well. Took him right to Med Express. I was ready to call. I called our lead nurse, said I'm probably gonna be in quarantine because I've now been exposed. Fortunately with the sixteen-year-old, they don't spend a significant amount of time with you. It's just the nature of a sixteen-year-old. But um, so went and we ruled it out. He actually was positive for strep and negative for COVID. So I did not have to quarantine. He stayed as a virtual learner, but we gotta take those steps in order to mitigate some of this piece. That's the biggest thing that the families can do to help us and our staff can do to help us. If you're sick, stay home. We'll work with you through that.
Now, Dr. Nichols,
Yes.
was talking about a little bit earlier, and I think the hard thing for, for, for many parents to comprehend, and this is back to your example of one positive case affects twenty-four people. And why it's so important that if parents, again, you can never say it enough. If, if you're in doubt, just keep your kid at home.
Yeah.
If you're in doubt, stay at home because the economic impact of this thing is, is incredible. Uh, I mean, I was telling them a similar situation at our daycare center is that we had a, a positive case. I mean, in two weeks, you lose thirteen thousand dollars because you've gotta pay all your staff that's out. All of these kids are quarantined that are not paying, that don't, that you can't charge for because it's not their fault. And, and I think that's, that's one of the things that is so critical is that it's a lot easier to lose one day
Mm-hmm.
than ten. And that's why if you're in doubt, just stay out that day and, and let's take care of it.
Yeah.
So that we don't multiply the situation a hundredfold because even in that class, there are tons of parent, there are twenty parents now plus that have to make arrangements for daycare that they necessarily didn't have to make before, that they have to pay somebody to watch their child over one particular case and, and which potentially, we don't know, but it's just, that's why the thought process is so important when we're dealing with this. Because it does have a significant economic impact on families of, that we don't comprehend sometimes.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Also want to update you on uh, winter sports as well. So that's to provide a little bit of an update on that. We are concluding the winter season. Um, but not without its setbacks. Um, so thirteen games have been canceled um and/or rescheduled. Uh, and that happens in a number of different forms. The most recent one, there was a positive case on a team that we played, New Kent High School played. So our team had to be shut down for fourteen days because we played against somebody with a positive case. So scheduling, rescheduling, it's not error-free anywhere that, that we do. Uh, people are coming together. So just a reminder, as we work through this, there are gonna be disruptions in the classroom, disruptions outside of the classroom. But we remain in that low mitigation and spread, which is a great thing, but we remain in that low mitigation spread because we shut stuff down when it happens. We don't try to cut a corner and go, okay, this person, X, Y, Z, let's come back a little sooner. We really shut it down. Um, so increased protocols. I just received the protocols for fall sports. Um, those of you that aren't following high school sports, I did say fall, fall occurs after winter this year. So in sports only, hopefully. So if you're excited about field hockey and football and cross-country and golf in March, we've got a season for you. So uh, we'll be outdoors for most of our sports, uh, working through that, but it, it'll be um, it'll look like this. Uh, Mr. Speack has done a tremendous job organizing, reorganizing, scheduling, rescheduling and the protocols. Um, we've gotten a lot of compliments specifically from Bay Rivers and, and York schools on how we're operating sanitation, locker rooms and everything that we're doing. What you see on your right, that's this week's schedule. Um, you can see Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, they're red and lines marked out. Every day this week, we have something that was supposed to happen. It's not gonna happen. And all of those are actually ones that were out of our control. Um, either we played against somebody or they had a different issue and had to shut down their program. So um sometimes you hear that sports have gone great and nothing, it, it's really not the case. You don't always hear about it, but we've managed it. We gave our kids an opportunity. Sometimes you hear that sports have gone great, nothing, it's really not the case, you don't always hear about it, but we've managed it, we gave our kids an opportunity and we're kind of moving forward, so fall sports starts Thursday.
Dr. Nichols, were there any cancellations or rescheduled games with the wrestling team at all that you know of?
Ms. Swinford, I hate to even answer that question because the season's not over, but I'm going to knock on wood. So yes, we had one weight class at one meet where a kid tested positive, we found out before it happened. So we have not a whole team and we keep kids in smaller groups pods to mitigate some of that in the wrestling world, but we have had cases where kids didn't wrestle because of positive cases, so. That one confounds me a little bit, Ms. Swinford, but that's kind of where we are right now.
I know, it's just, I don't think anybody would have expected that, but it's, it's interesting, thanks.
You're welcome. Want to provide a vaccination update for the public, the board has heard this piece, so January 23rd, we were able to partner with the health departments, I want to thank them again and really want to thank the county specifically, Chief Opett for really partnering on the logistics and offering his team and, and just being a great partner with it, the sheriff's office and everybody really came together, so. The push has been to go to a regional clinic, the Richmond Raceway or something like that, that's just not convenient for New Kent residents, New Kent employees, so. We really pushed hard to host our own vaccination clinic, we gave them the high school, really gave them free rein, so we were able to pull that off January 23rd. It is always the week of to find out whether you have enough doses of the vaccine. So we did find out on that Monday and we rolled on that Saturday. They were so impressed with our initial setup, we were going to start at 500, which would have been our employees and Charles City County, so we pulled Charles City in. That they were able to get 300 more doses, so we started to expand to childcare workers, other people in 1B, parks and rec, and eventually we got to 65 plus. So what started as a New Kent Schools initiative expanded to Charles City and then really became a community push, which was beautiful. I've offered this high school any day that they want to do this, if it's going to help our community and it's going to help us move forward, we're all in on supporting that, a lot of our team was there to support, so we had over 850 people receive their initial vaccination. So we were, we didn't even think we'd get that many doses and we had that many people come through, so really a beautiful opportunity. February 20th is our second vaccination clinic, so it was the Moderna vaccine, which requires two doses, 28 days apart. February 20th is exactly 28 days from the first one, so we have confirmed that date. You will see there's a caveat, it is dependent on vaccinations applied. So my good friends in Chesterfield, we're going to do 4,000 last week and it got 450, so they had to cancel the whole thing, so we just don't know until I'll know that Monday when they arrive. But we're planning for that and we're planning to try to expand it more in that 1B, because the sooner we get there with the 1B, we can get into the 1C piece. And I'd really like us to do our part to move New Kent forward with this. The VDH did say that they're going to use our setup as a model for mass vaccination specifically in rural places. So very excited about that, a couple of our teachers became rock stars, they were picked up on New Kent County's Facebook page and so forth, so there's another, I wasn't brave enough to get my picture while getting it done, so. They're much better models than I could have been, so very exciting, gives a lot of hope and our staff really appreciated that. So far this year, we've had a lot of discussion as a team in the past couple of weeks about our approach and the work we're doing. We've been very focused on the next step, so that's what you see in front of you is what is that next step that we haven't always shown the whole staircase. So what we'd like to do with you today is begin to show more of that next staircase, put some dates on some cohorts and look at that as far as a plan moving forward. So cohort three, that's the next group that's up, that's grades two and three, they start tomorrow, so that's the stair that we're on. So looking at the entire staircase, still going with that focus phased approach to in-person learning, want to take you further up that staircase, okay? So cohorts updated, this is the model that we started with. Cohort one, cohort two, cohort three, so we have cohort four and cohort five, which is grades four and five and then grades six through 12. Then a lot of conversation and a lot of thinking about what the best next step would be for these cohorts. So we've made some changes and we're still working through those changes, but I wanted to share with the public and share with the board a shift that we're working on right now. So with two, three coming back tomorrow means that next up would be four or five. But we've talked about the benefits of kindergarten and first, they came back before everybody else, our kindergartners were the first people in the building, they've never seen the building before. And it ripped really well, so we started thinking, dreaming and working on, well, you know, our sixth graders have never seen that middle school. And our freshmen have never seen that high school. When we bring four or five back, could we expand it and get the kids who've never been a part of that building in? So here's the reason why that's, that's a great thing to do. One, kids have never seen the building, we covered that, it also gives us an opportunity to do some stress tests. What we learned with K1 on how to move, how not to move and do those pieces, we're going to learn with six and nine as well. So it gives us an opportunity versus going six, 12 at the same time. Which would leave seven, eight, 10, 11, 12 if I did my number correct for the final cohort, so. Thoughts on that sort of approach, I'll get to dates in a second, but.
I think that helps, I think because introducing the sixth and ninth grade, there's, gets them started sooner. And it is a different building, so it's a different set of circumstances.
It's been a different set of administrators so that they can work through whatever operation or justice.
And one of the biggest things that we'll be doing, and we have partnered with some of our neighbors that have either been in hybrid or have been in person about how they move kids throughout the building, so like Hanover specifically does not move kids, teachers move. I'm not sure I want to keep a sixth grader in the same room all day, never moving, lunch comes in, those pieces, not to say that's a wrong strategy, right strategy, but we've also worked with some other places that do have kids flow, so.
When you work with these places, you are talking to your counterparts in these, can you talk a little bit about what that looks like as you've communicated with other districts that are in school?
Absolutely, we do a lot of conversations with, well, regionally, and some of these folks are in our region, some are not in our region. But also across the Commonwealth, working together with schools, whether Southwest Virginia and rural schools or larger school divisions and. Part of the issue with the initial guidance that we were given is you get 132 versions of how to do it, that's exactly how many school divisions are in the state of Virginia, where you have Richmond City, who's already said they're not coming back at all, any group for the rest of the year. Two folks that have started day one and have been in session, so. Working with all of those folks, the high school specifically has worked with Colonial Heights, so you may say, why Colonial Heights and not Hanover? Hanover is a large school division, they're able to mask some of these staffing pieces because you have multiple high schools, you can pull different teachers, we have one chemistry teacher. So Colonial Heights has the same setup, they have about 1,000 kids, so that's why Colonial Heights was our point of contact. Now Colonial Heights has had to shut down their high school on a couple of occasions, it just happens. But that's where we kind of learned the best lessons for the high school. Elementary worked with some Hanover schools, one of the biggest hangups and or difficulties in elementary was bathroom use and kids rotating through the bathroom, so they got some great strategies on how they manage those pieces, so yes, we continue to work through our colleagues. That's probably been one of the most beautiful outcomes of this is we're tighter than we've ever been as a group of superintendents because we're all trying to figure this out.
So to clarify, classrooms in other school divisions like Hanover and West Point, those classrooms are, they have students that are virtual and students that are in person and they're set up based on the CDC and DOE guidelines in terms of mask wearing, social distancing. So they've been able to accommodate their capacity with the buildings that they have.
Yeah, so that's another difference between the large school division and small schools and plus your survey data numbers. Now, our survey looks different than some of those other school divisions did, and I'll show you six, 12 specifically what that looks like. And it's no secret, we're building a new elementary school, we have a groundbreaking on Thursday, space is at a premium. And that'll come into play when we talk about models for middle and high school too. Six feet is the gold standard, you know, we've moved to three feet, which is acceptable, American PDAFIC Association. But even at three feet, we have a waiting list at K1 for folks that were initially virtual and now want to come in person because we just don't have any more room in that building. And it is an issue once we get to fourth grade specifically at George Washington. We're navigating where we would have 24 kids in a classroom, because that's the number that wanted to come back. And we can't quite fit 24 kids at three feet and we cannot go less than that. So some of the challenges, space and number of kids being one of them, we are managing to do K5 four days a week. So we're very excited about that piece, board had a lot of discussion about hybrids specifically for K5 not being an ideal model, and I would agree, that is the model that West Point is doing. Not to say that that's right or wrong, just everybody's doing different, different pieces, so. Four days a week right now, four or five, and we'll talk about schedule changes here in a second. There is an asterisk beside nine, we're still working on that piece, I'm going to bring you all the details and information about cohort four at our work session on the 16th. The difficulty with grade nine and the piece we have to work out in, sixth graders take sixth grade courses only, you take six math, you take this, you're together. A ninth grader comes in and they take ninth grade English and that's it. I could be taking bio, I could be taking, you know, whatever other science, maybe an environmental science. I could be in music, I could be in band, I could be in tech, I could be wherever, and then we're all being different maths, I could be in algebra two, you could be in algebra one. So that's where the ninth grade gets a little bit tricky, we got to do some logistics work with that, so that's why I just wanted to note the little asterisk beside that.
So in the high school with some of these other communities that are in the classroom, are they changing classes in the high schools?
Yes, some are changing classes in the high school, what some are doing specifically is you're coming in person. So let's say we're all in-person learners and this is our classroom, but we're actually learning virtual. So I still have my earbuds in, sort of like our internet access, you have people on 10 different things learning that way, so many different models.
Classroom with a teacher on the other end of the computer sometimes?
Yes, even though they're in person. And in some cases, that will be the case here.
And what is, what about when we, when they change classes, how are we able to maintain a three-foot social distance?
So in the middle school specifically, looking at staggered bell schedules. Mr. Wheeler and Ms. Gray have done a tremendous job in the planning and scheduling of that, down to what team would go at what time, so instead of one bell and everybody moves, there'll be specific bells per team so that you will minimize movement, they've also rearranged and I, a lot of work has happened that we may not have shared publicly at the meeting, but even in the beginning of the year, we set up that you now are on a hall with your teams of English, math, science, social studies, so you stay in this subset of the building, whereas you may have traveled more before, you really kind of stay in a confined space and you travel as a group.
But not so much at the high school?
Not so much at the high school, the high school's difficult just because of the scheduling and where people reside, so that is a much more difficult one to manage and one we continue to work through. Which is why bringing six and nine in specifically ahead gives you an opportunity to make some of those modifications. Just like our elementary folks have done before two, three come back tomorrow, they've been able to make some changes and some shifts.
And again, I think it's important that we stress to parents too that they have the option to remain virtual if they choose to and would do that. And then that transportation piece, I don't know, I don't want to steal your thunder, but.
No, you're fine. Transportation is something Mr. Henson and I talk about quite often, and I would tell you the work that he and his team do to pull this off, even at K3 tomorrow, nothing, nothing short of amazing. So once again, at our work session on the 16th, I'll bring you the specific scheduled pieces, we're still ironing those out, I just want to share thinking and where we're going, so when we shift cohort four, so when four, five comes back, you know, with six and potentially nine, we're actually going to move to two tiers of transportation, which is what we typically run during a regular year, right now we have one, one tier, so buses go out, buses come back. When you move to two tiers and we do it now in between routes too, there's a 25 to 30 minute cleaning process needs to happen before kids get back on the bus, so that is not typically built in a school year. You go pick up your high school kids and then you go pick up your elementary kids, now you're going to go pick up your high school kids, you've got to clean the bus, which we have the supplies and materials and so forth, and then you go back out for the next run. So when cohort four comes back, our fourth and fifth grade, we've moved to multiple tiers for transportation, we would also extend the time for in-person instruction. So one of the conversations at one of our earlier meetings, Mr. Meade talked about the schedule nine to 1:30 or that piece, that would go away. It would be a longer school day for in-person learning and would also make way for us to run high school and middle school before we run elementary school. So it's a big puzzle that allows the logistics to kind of match up there. So on the 16th, I'll present to families what that would look like, but it would be more on a traditional school schedule as far as hours and time. So more time spent in person, which is a great thing, but we want to make this shift once and not shift at 30 minutes with families and then shift another hour, so when we make this shift, we're set K12. That makes sense.
And talking about that, that shift. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's one of the challenges is going to be, the shift will take place for in-person learning, but how will that affect those virtual students? You know, if they're used to this schedule, will they have the same schedule?
So the plan for elementary is that virtual instruction times would stay the same, but we don't, virtual learning, person, in-person learning and virtual learning, two totally different things, right? So you don't have the recess component, you don't have some of the movement components and those pieces, so you lose time in person. Lose time sounds terrible, recess, but I mean, you do have other things that you don't have with virtual learning, so the plan would be the virtual learning, families are in that groove, they've chosen to stay virtual. That time would pretty much stay the same. And then what we would, the in-person learning would be the expanded piece, and they would come out to be about the same as far as instructional value or instructional integrity, like kids, virtual will not fall behind kids in person as far as content and what's delivered. But just working with their best practices with virtual instruction, we wouldn't expand that time too, so now you're on the screen from nine to 3:30 versus nine to 1:30 or whatever the, the data points would be, so. Lots of balancing, lots of lines. Moving forward with return to in-person learning, I just want to highlight a couple of the variables that kind of keep us up at night and that we're working through. So the next slide's a little messy, it's intentionally so. So changing guidelines, I lost count of the change in guidelines that we've gotten this year from CDC, VDH and VDOE. The new guidelines that I showed you earlier from VDH, you don't necessarily match CDC, so you have differences between those different pieces. Space requirements for in-person learning, you know, even at three feet, we have some pretty significant challenges that some other folks don't have. Making sure we're paying attention to our health metrics and our staff and student wellness. For Ms. Morehouse's purposes, pandemic-related costs, we're spending a lot of money on pandemic-related costs. So making sure that we're mindful of that, securing grant funds to do a lot of that work. Navigating extracurriculars with other divisions, I shared the rescheduling slide from just this week. One of the biggest pieces is reduce capacity on buses and increase cleaning protocols, so. A 70-plus passenger bus is now reduced to, you know, 24, 25 kids on a bus. So significant challenge to run your buses at 1/3 capacity, because you can't use the first seats because then that's too close to the driver and then it's one kid per seat alternated. Unless you're in the same household and then we could double up and maybe we get 27 kids on a bus, but that remains one of the biggest challenges that we have with our routing and so forth. Balancing in-person virtual learning, Mr. Meade's question got right to that. We do have some staffing shortcomings and I'm not even talking staffing shortcomings when we have a quarantine. One of the biggest challenges that superintendents, you know, talking to other school divisions is bus drivers. There is a driver shortage across the Commonwealth compounded by the fact that you can't get to the DMV to get folks certified. Get CDLs and so forth, so even if you had a pool, which people are lacking the pool, to get people certified is just a significant, remember, I don't know, you want to say how long, how long would it take? To get people certified is uh just a significant, remember, I don't know, you want to say how lo- how long would it take?
So normally, if you would start someone from scratch, but giving them a training, getting a C D L. Usually you can get them certified about three months. Now, it's, we're looking at about six months to get someone in. Um just because you've got that backlog with D N B, they're at about a month and a half to two months. So what needs to happen is an employee comes in, first of all, we need to give them a draw. Uh that's always the most challenging part. So once we get to that phase, um they have to go out and get their C D L warrants. And so I'll tell you, the C D L warrant for that, um it's not something that's easy. I can tell you that we've had several teachers that we've certified and they struggled with the tests. Um it's definitely a lot different from what it used to be ten years ago or twenty years ago. They've definitely made it a little bit more difficult. So um for them to kind of get in to get their C D L would roughly take them about a month. Um and a half to two months just to be able to get into the D N B to get there. From there, they would then be released to us, um and once all of their background checks and everything cleared. Um they would be in training with us for about a week long. So you, we would be taking them out, showing them everything underneath the hood. They have to know every single part underneath of the hood of the school bus. In order to get that C D L. So basically, that means you need to know what an alternator is, you need to know what airbellos are. Um I mean, literally, every single item that's pretty much underneath the hood, they have to be able to get that through. So we would train them up, and at that point, we would get them out to Chester. Um to go to D N B to get certified. That would then take another month and a half to two months. So the question may ask, well, once you get them in, why can't you get them? Everyone, we, people don't test the same. Some people, it may take a little bit longer than others. So, you know, when we look at it now with what we're going for. We're looking at about five and a half to six months to get someone certified for a C D L. And so what that basically means there is, it's quite challenging because. We don't want to be in a situation where, you know, we're opening up school, and you know, we're making the news because we've got a bus that's constantly late. Um because we don't have the staff um to kind of get back. So that's definitely where it really makes it. Um quite challenging because we don't want to let the students down, we don't want to let the parents down. And most certainly, we don't want to delay school or be in a situation because we are not fully certified or have enough drivers to get students to a full school.
And um Mr. Henson says the physical, how long does it take to get that scheduled and get back? Because that comes into play too.
Yeah, so I mean, with that being said, so we also have to. Each driver, they must pass physical. Um it's a D O T physical, um and that's something that's also challenging. So that means that if you had unknown medical conditions, um often times if someone go and get a physical and they don't pass, they're basically pull off a loss of heat. Um sometimes it's actually a good thing because a lot of times, some people will learn that, you know, they had a condition that they weren't aware that they had. Um so i- it's um quite challenging. Now on that, you also have to be able to have a good driver record. So I would not go through and hire someone with negative points on their driving record to drive a school bus. Um so you know, that that's another piece. With that being said, you know, bus drivers are only allowed to get one ticket within the school year. Or within a year, so meaning that if I got cited for speeding for sixty-five miles per hour or forty-five. Well, if it's reckless driving, then I'm not gonna be able to drive a bus at all. Um so it's definitely a lot of challenges that you've got to go through. Um whereas I think the normal person, they look at it, it's like, well, how hard is it to really get C D L? How hard is it to drive a school bus? There are so many things that you have to go through to be able to get to the first step to be able to get into trouble.
I'll sub in a classroom. You you don't want me driving a bus, so.
When when we just had this recent uh classroom close, did that impact transportation?
It, well, it did because your your contact tracing also carries over onto the bus. So the a a student, theoretically, if a student was involved. Um so let's say we have a student that's positive. We do the tracing within the school, no matter what the level is. Of course, at high school, it'd be more complicated because now they've moved to multiple places and basically follow a kid. Um so but if that kid also rides the bus, then we gotta go on, we have to go on to that bus. View camera and go, okay, where were the significant interactions as defined by CDC? We are one per seat, so if you are in a seat next to somebody who tests positive, then you you're subject to quarantine as well. So it it does follow through that piece.
And then we're additional four.
Yeah. Um and so fortunately, it does not impact the driver unless the driver becomes sick to bed because we do have that six-foot bearer. From driver to first student.
And and I know that there are challenges with a lot of parent drop offs with our, you know, our parking lots not really being set up for that. But it sounds like that's still favorable or what's, that still helps significantly when parents choose to. To drive their children or find other transportation other than the bus.
It does, yes. It definitely helps us when when uh families drive, especially in uh current circumstances. Uh it does become a a different challenge that we navigate through. Uh Mr. Mack talked last time about when four, five comes back, he's gonna have over a hundred fifty drop offs. So basically, he's gonna switch his bus loop and his parent drop off. Um because he'll have more cars coming in than he'll have buses. So something we have to navigate and work through. And if you've tried to come to this school or any other school on Egypt Road during a regular year. Um it can be challenging and tough. Now you add in the number of 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 cars at peace. So it 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 is very helpful. It brings another series of challenges that we work through. So, um other things that that we work through and and we're balancing those different pieces, so I won't go through those. Um but I do want to give you a little bit of an update on six twelve. And then finish with some next steps. So we did a survey for families in six twelve. We gave them two different options and you had to choose both. Uh many of us in this room took that uh survey, so. Uh if it was four days a week, would you want to come back in person or virtual? So we wanted that data point. That was our goal, right? But if it was only two days a week, would you come back in person or virtual? And here's the piece that surprised me to a degree, is I thought those numbers would be pretty different, but they're pretty close. So our families that want to come back in person, really, whether it's two days or four days a week, want to come back in person. So, good challenge and bad challenge, um just navigating numbers. So when we look at the survey data and we look at the CDC requirements, looking at that three feet. Uh with the current numbers we had, it would really necessitate a hybrid schedule. So for grades six through twelve, we would be looking at two days of in-person instruction. Which will be different from the elementary school, which is also not uncommon. Um like Bootlen was navigating one of those different schedules um for a while as well.
But if they did virtual, would the virtual still be four days a week or would virtual be two days a week?
Those are the pieces that we're working through specifically, we'll bring to you on the on the sixteen. So once again, try not to disrupt the in-person piece, but the staffing challenges in six twelve. Not really six, eight as much as nine, twelve, um looking at at those pieces, yeah. So we would be looking at a hybrid schedule, oops, you're fine. A couple mi- uh middle school setups, so you can see what it does to a classroom, and that's at three feet. Just wanted to bring you that visual. The two biggest challenges we've been navigating, will continue to navigate, will remain space. Uh and will be quarantines. Those will be the two biggest things uh that that will drive, you know, where we are and what we're doing. So we have done the legwork to set up classrooms and look and see how many kids we can get in. We had mostly come through. Early on in the process and and mock up a diagram. Uh unfortunately, their diagram didn't always include. Uh where a sink was or this piece was, so we had to go in and actually do the the work. So, next steps, second and third grade return tomorrow. Very excited about that. Continue to work on planning for cohort four. So let's talk about cohort four because I don't have this listed um at this point. So cohort four, which has uh fourth, fifth, sixth, possibly ninth. We would look at March first as a potential return for cohort four. So, once again, the sixteenth will come back together. You'll see all the numbers, the class size pieces that that. Um we typically talk about, and that would come before you for a potential vote on that day. So, typically, we do, we let a cohort come in for a couple of weeks and then we provide the next date. We're gonna go ahead and provide our target. Here's what we're working towards for that group, so that the public knows here's where we are in the process. We also have vaccination planning round two, that's scheduled for February twentieth. At the s- the February sixteenth meeting, I'd also like to provide you a date with cohort five, which would be the last cohort.
Um Dr. Nichols, I'm not sure if you're planning, I'm planning on talking about this. Could you explain, um once the teachers are vaccinated, the classrooms are still set up like this?
Correct.
That doesn't change.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Barbara. I had that to talk about in uh in my vaccination slide, got so excited about eight hundred fifty, I flew right through it. Um so yes, while we're very excited about the vaccination, it really changes nothing from the way we have to set up. The way we have to mitigate movement, are wearing the masks, and even our quarantines. So our current guidance that we have through the CDC, if even if I've been vaccinated both rounds. And Mr. Miller tests positive and I'm exposed to him, I still have to go home for ten days or fourteen days to follow the protocol. So, we're very excited about it. It does uh, you know, provide support for our teachers and our employees. And we expanded that to substitute teachers, student teachers, you name it, custodial, we got everybody in. Uh or opened the door for everybody. But from the way we operate at this point, it really changes nothing as far as three feet, mask, mitigate movement. Cleaning, bus, all of that stays in place, including quarantines. Uh so thank you for bringing me back to that.
I can speak to that a little bit because I'm working healthcare, as you know, we were um in the one A group. Um and so I've had colleagues, team members that. Um maybe a a nurse has been, had both vaccinations, has been fully vaccinated. But then um a s- a spouse turns up with with COVID because um they're not vaccinated. The the rules do not change for that nurse. I am still required to let that per- to have that person. They're not allowed to come back into the building, um and that's given to them as a. Um as directive until we hear otherwise from the the CDC or until they change direction of that. So I just wanted to make sure you all are aware. It does keep them safe though, which is what we want, so. Um they're ninety-five percent less likely to get it.
That's right. And and we're hopeful with, that the health metrics will start to go down and vaccinations will increase. And we'll sort of meet at this piece to to really get that traction beyond this year, but into summer with our summer programming. And then into next fall as well. So we are moving forward with all cohorts. Two, three returns tomorrow. Um we have a tentative date for cohort four, March first. And then I'll bring you the rest of the staircase uh that we showcased on at our work session, so.
Dr. Nichols, did you say a potential date for cohort five when we meet on February sixteenth?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because we'll have, two, three will have been in for two weeks. You already have the cohort four. We'd be able to have a cohort five date uh for you as well. Or at least a date to work towards, yes.
You know, I want to go back to defend the our bus situation. To me, one of the biggest frustrations dealing with this from a public standpoint of view is. Is the hypocrisy that we find when it comes to how mitigation occurs. Because we have these things in place for our school bus drivers and for our students because there's only twenty-seven people. But it's amazing to me that the majority of all cities in America that have public transportation don't have to apply to those guidelines.
I think they do.
Well, not on the subway, not on an airplane.
I think that there are a lot of people that are, I mean, if somebody has COVID or they're, they should be.
Then what I'm saying, no, what I'm saying though is, yeah, the public transportation, if you get on a subway, you get on an airplane. You're not three feet apart, you're not six feet apart, you're not those things. And I think frustration is, is that it makes it. When you're trying to do this logistics, it makes it very difficult. And I think back to what you said, Ms. Barbara, the problem is, when you put something out. You, they put it out not giving the full stories, basically, saying just because you get the vaccine doesn't mean. And I think the assumption for most people was that they get the vaccine and. People just go back to normal overnight because they hear the word vaccine.
Right.
Whereas, we all know, the biggest issue is, is that. We know that the vaccine is supposed to be ninety-five percent effective, but we don't know if next year, people have to get a different vaccine because. It's COVID twenty-one. And and I think the challenges that we're working through, they're gonna be continual challenges. They're just not gonna go away overnight. Because we live in a culture that unfortunately, a lot of different people have to play by. A lot of different rules and people are interpreting a lot of different things. And I think that's the moving target, which makes parents and and the average adult very frustrated. Because they see so many different things every single day. And they're, and they're having to make up what they think is the truth. And I, and I, back to your, the conversations about trying to move forward. And I think that it's, because it's hard for everyone.
Right.
To move forward. But at least as we're working toward these goals of of setting dates and doing everything in our power. And move people forward, then that's what we're called to do. It's just to move people forward, and I appreciate, you know, the work that earns me with transportation. Because to me, that's just amazing. I I mean, you know, that the state puts those requirements on us. And everybody else gets to play by a different set of rules. You, you know, and it makes it that much more challenging. It's not like they give us fifty more buses and fifty more drivers than we have.
But nor money for fuel, so we're gonna be running at one-third capacity, but we're still running the same distances. Uh so I mean, that, you know, that's keeping a track of all those expenses as well and then offsetting those pieces. Very inefficient to run a bus with twenty-four kids on it all over the county. Very inefficient to run a hybrid with twenty-four kids. Um so that's another challenge with two hundred thirty-one square miles. Uh West Point is like eight. So, you know, it's just different challenges with 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 Marvin and his team in transportation, so.
And. Into our action items. For the security grant, my mere motion to approve the appropriation of security grant funds and transfer C I P as presented.
Uh I mean, we approved the uh security grant and transfer of C I P funds.
A second.
On paper?
I.
February sixteenth, and then we also, that's our work session on February the sixteenth. At six o'clock, and then our next Friday, our monthly meeting will be March first.